Good afternoon and welcome. I would like to call to order the town of Dayton Board of Health regular meeting. We are currently at Old Town Hall, one eleven Somerset Ave. It is Thursday, January twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, and it is four thirty-five. This is also a remote participation meeting. It is a public meeting. It is being recorded for public broadcast, internet posting on W W dash W W dot Dayton dash M A dot gov and YouTube. At this time, can I call a role?
Paul, you go here.
Patrick McGovern here.
And Nicole Mello. Can we please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice as one.
A new business, a review discuss act, the establishment of an office manager screening committee. Is there going to speak on that? All right.
I mean, I can.
So as we know, applications for the office manager are being accepted until the eighteenth. From there, then we need to set up a screening committee. We're looking to consist it of the board members, the town administrator and Karen Brady. Does anyone have any discussion on that?
No.
No?
Do we need to make a motion?
Um, yes.
So it's all be board members on the committee?
Is, yes. To consist of each member of the Board of Health, town administrator, and Karen Brady as the human resource coordinator.
I'll make a motion that members of Board of Health and Mike Mullin and Karen Brady will be part of the interview committee.
Second.
Yep. All right, motion passes. Um, and then it was no discussion.
Say hi.
Oh, sorry. I say I, I.
I, sorry.
From this, all right.
Want to make sure we don't get any.
No, everyone say I. Um, all right. So B, we're going to review discuss act on the transportation rejected mattress fee.
Notice came out of solid waste committee. Uh, we just recently raised the price of trash bed. Mattress disposal to forty dollars, but if the mattress comes in, it's excessively moldy or bed bugs, uh, we have to reject it. But we decided as solid waste committee that just rejecting it and telling them to take it away was not necessarily the best thing to do. So we've decided that the fee of one hundred and twenty-five dollars covers the cost for us to dispose of a rejected mattress. So as always, committee has recommended to the Board of Health that the fee be raised to one hundred and twenty-five dollars for a mattress that is rejected. And you should have the fee scheduled in when you're in the middle there. That's all waste committee would like. And I believe the Board of Health would just be recommending it to the selectman.
Because prior to that, if it was rejected, they were just residents were just turned away, right?
Well, no, we've been taking, they used to go in with bulky bin for trash. They would never. But now that we're recycling, now we can't recycle. So this is something just popped up like within a month.
So yeah, they would at that point have been rejected. And now this is an option so that residents don't have to just leave. They can at least have the option of paying and having it disposed.
Yeah, if it does get rejected, where are they going?
Yeah, that's the thing.
I called any out and they don't take them anymore. So there's really no other place other than to take them. Stay home and burn it. Well, they, yeah, the, the ones that are excessively infill with bedbugs, nobody wants those. Right. Any I won't take any at all. Yeah. It's getting further and harder and harder to get rid of stuff nowadays. I'll make a motion that we agree with the solid waste committees' suggestion of one hundred and twenty-five dollars a mattress. Uh, you mean, you're going to recommend it to the selectman? Recommend it to the selectman.
Second.
Um.
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm an I and the motion passes. So we're going to view a review discuss act, the payment authorization form. Prior, we had myself and Barbara on it, and now we need to get both Patrick and Paul. Is there anything else I should say about that, Tom?
Uh, the only thing, I, I think it still should only require one signature. But if you're not around, around our own Patrick, you know, at least one of us should be around to sign. But I think that it also, all three of us should get an email of what it is. So if Patrick has to sign it, at least you get a copy, I get a copy. So we know what we're.
What's getting signed?
Yes.
I mean, it makes sense. I don't.
So anything Nicole signs, you need an email on to, or just something she doesn't sign, one of the others does? Well, I think all three of us should get an email or a copy of what was signed, no matter who signs.
What, like, um, in regards to things that have money involved or?
Payroll.
Oh, hey, payroll.
I think that's all this is, you know, well.
That's the payroll and bills.
And bills?
Yes.
So can we do letters too? Like the letter to recommend to the selectmen for the mattress fee would have to get signed by the chair. Only one signature?
Yes.
Oh, we need two. On certain payments, we won't need two? Well, no. But I was referring to the, you just made a, wrote motions, a hundred and twenty-five dollar fee recommendation to selectmen. Yeah. I would prepare that letter and then Nicole will sign it. You want an email saying that she's signing that letter? Is that what it does? It's not just for bills and payroll. There's a bunch of other things, permits, licenses.
I think if I can say, is your concern that there's one board member signing something and then it's all the board members are responsible for whatever somebody's signing. I signed something, say I signed something, and we're not all in agreement with whatever it is.
Obviously mainly in the payroll. Payroll, you know, we can't hold up. It's got to go through. So even if one of us finds a discrepancy in it, it can always be addressed later.
Mm-hmm.
You know what I mean? It doesn't have to be addressed before, before payroll's cut. You know what I mean? Payroll, like, well, this week, but then next week, you find out, hey, there's something on here that shouldn't have been.
The, the accountant always comes back to, is it the accountant? Yeah. She always comes back to us and lets us know if, for whatever reason, if I missed something or if Todd had missed something, she comes back right away and alerts us to it.
But how does she know how many hours people put in?
She's just going by the, what we.
We're signing.
Yes.
Right. So as I'm saying, you know.
But how would you know how many hours that they put in, like?
We're going to figure that out.
All right. Do you have any discussion on this?
Oh.
I just say to put more on why we only have, well, we have, we have Nancy, which we appreciate. But, um, in the office right now, we're very limited.
Right. And I'm not trying to make it too complicated. I was basically talking about money.
Yes.
We just send an alert of a recommendation. We don't have to have a copy of that, I believe. I said, we don't want to make too much work out of it.
Mm-hmm.
Charge about that.
I mean, I see the, I, the understanding for it for seeing where money goes kind of thing. Um, but I mean, if we don't have the bandwidth to, to do it right now with an office manager, I don't know if it's adding more work to an already big pile.
All right, well, we just go with the, anyone else can sign it. And then we can always request a copy if we feel alone.
Maybe I think that's more appropriate, yeah.
Okay.
Sure.
You good? Um, oh, so what kind of motion needed to go along with this in regards to them signing this now? Uh, just that they're going to sign it?
I'll make a motion that any of the members of the Board of Health will be able to sign for payroll or any other expenses.
I don't know how to write it.
I think it should be to, to me, they all authorize signatories for the model health, but if you wanted copies of anything that was a bill, but it's basically for. Well, yeah, but we're not going to do the, the coffee right now.
No, yeah, we're just gonna, if, if for whatever reason, Paul or Patrick decide that they want to see something that's not signed off, they're just going to request it. Um, but for how it stands with them signing off on this, just want to make sure that we motion correctly.
Yeah, we just have per table and bills. Yes.
So we're looking forward. We need everything.
No, I think it's just, that's, that's what this is for. For financial, if I'm understanding it right, it's for financial things.
Strictly for finance. As signatories approving that the finances can be expended by any budgets that fall under the jurisdiction of this board. So that's all that's doing.
Okay. Can I get a second to that motion?
Second.
Um, a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm an I and that passes. Um, D, review discuss act fiscal year two thousand twenty-four budget.
You got any of your packets there? I believe the, um, impressions for this year's budget. Different than previous years for some extent. Um, however, trash occupies solid waste, occupies the majority of our budget. That is somewhat guided by comments and the way most can be. And so we're bringing it in what they talk for.
How, since this is all, we're all new, and this is our first year, kind of looking at the budget. How is this usually? How is this tackled?
Normally, the chairman of the Board of Health, sometimes, um, would do a lot of the work. He would sit down with us to get numbers, you know, how many times trash should we talk about that kind of thing? And then he would write the numbers and then I would type them into the spreadsheet. We would then print them out for the board. And then we would kick them around. So normally there'd be one, we would kick it around, and then we'd have a second meeting right at the end of the month, right before this dude to finalize stuff. Further when we go, the more bills we get, so it makes it easier to predict.
Mm-hmm.
But.
It was my understanding, Paul, that you were interested in working on the.
Yeah, everyone's working on it.
All right.
Do you have anything on the F P?
No, I, I don't mind helping out, but I just want everything I stand that I don't work for the health department officially. So I'm, I'm, I'm here as a team player. I'm here to help out as much as I can, especially since you're meeting on Nancy. But, um, you know, I'll assist any way I can, but if I'm going to create a zero-based budget for the health department, that's going to take an absorbent amount of my time.
No, and I, I don't really think it's appropriate for you to be doing it, just where, how things stand right now. Um.
Yeah. Yeah, so I'll work with Jim all that. I'll hold up.
All right, but outside of Jim helping you, also, we have taught us the resources as well that we should utilize.
I'll almost see to make sure it's.
Okay. And, um, should we set a date that we're going to reconvene on this? I mean, I want to make sure that we stick to a deadline and we have.
When's the deadline?
All our ducks in a row. Um, so it needs to be, I see a date of February second, but wait, that's it. No later than Thursday, February second.
So that's only two weeks.
Right, and it's before our next schedule meeting. Yes, so you're going to have at least one special. And so normally the, the budget would be talked about. And then usually there's a second, a meeting right before the the end of the month, and that's when it would get formally voted on to get kicked off.
Okay. So, if I may.
Yep.
Being a zero-based budget year, there's a lot of discovery that needs to take place in order to build a zero-based budget. Basically, what it means is you put zeros in every column, and then you build a budget based on your known expenses and costs. So you can't just carry a number. And with a zero-based budget, you actually should provide proof of the discovery in, in two dimensions, that this is how we derived that number. So, um, I don't want to make it seem oversimplified, but I did that twelve, thirteen years ago when I took over my department. I started at zero and built it because I want to know what I was involved in. So for me, it's fairly simple process this year. But for a department like Board of Health where, and other departments, by the way, it's, it creates a lot of work. Um, so I can envision this taking two, three individuals, the better part of four or five meetings.
Really?
To try to do, absolutely. Yeah. Because the department may have some of the discovery, you know, paperwork needed. We may have to lean on the account for some of it. So, um, it's going to take quite a bit of time. I'm not trying to make it seem more than it is. I'm just giving you facts. The only time it should come back to the board as a specialist, once you add that in draft form, and then you can discuss each line individually and see if the data matches with what the vision for the board is, along with the data that supports the zero base, uh, budget. So there's, there's quite a bit to it. Excuse me. Uh. Sorry, Mike.
It's on the other end of it, this. Thank you.
Sorry, Mike.
So I know the solid waste committee is meeting on the review.
All right.
Right? Yes.
I can't remember.
I'm going on now, on Monday, the thirtieth, and so they're going to be looking at solid waste budgets. And so the whole business data ops and final numbers for it, make sure that we know exactly what we've got. But presumably.
We're not relying on them.
For some of it.
Okay.
Um, but presumably we'd want to have a special meeting either thirty-first or the first, I would assume, for the, for the final meeting. But we would probably need a meeting, we definitely need a meeting before that.
All right, so I want to, can we set up those meeting, those now? All right.
Todd, that final meeting that you're referring to would be approve the budget for still.
Mm-hmm. So that should be in theory, a two-minute meeting.
In theory.
But sometimes other things pop up and there may be discussion. Obviously, it's solid waste committee hits us with a curve ball and that's interesting. So.
I like to plan for, hope for the best, plan for the worst. If I stood that, right?
Next week's a three-day week. It is. Monday's a holiday. Monday was a candy. And Mike and I are going to Boston on Thursday.
We have solid water on instead.
Sound in like.
One o'clock. But what time do you need to start my work? It's usually one to four in the afternoon. And Nicole, were you doing that training on Tuesday?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, so Tuesday afternoon, Nicole and I have to.
But I mean, that's, that's the thing. We have.
No, we'd be back by some thirty.
Yeah.
I could probably come in, Jim, is that right? You, like, I'm in Tuesday, earlier in the day, and we just at least get started. We're detecting, taking all your time, I just.
Sure. As long as the health agent can have the budget printed and any documentation you have.
I already, I already gave it all to him.
Okay. Sure.
All right.
Todd, Mike, I'm sorry, Mike texted me. Do you need to unmute him or something or?
I don't, does that say ask to unmute?
Yes. There he is.
Hey, everyone, I have nothing to say. I'm just listening. That's all.
Okay. Hi, Michael.
Hi, Mike.
Everyone.
So were we trying to meet on Tuesday? Is that what we said?
No.
No, you're going to meet with Jim?
I'll meet with Jim and Todd.
Oh, wait, perfect.
Just get it started so that I can get enough information to work for him.
Okay.
So again, we're going to need to schedule two meetings. One, we'll call it preliminary budget meeting, and then one finalized the budget meeting. And the final budget meeting would be the thirty-first or the first. And that should be a quick one. It's the preliminary one, which may take members, we go line by line to go down everything that Paul's put together.
All right, so when should we book that one for?
I would think Paul's going to need a little bit of time to put it together. But we only have so long, so I would probably say like.
Absolutely, the following, yeah, following week. This is twenty-sixth work for.
I'm not here the twenty-sixth or the twenty-seventh, twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, oh, sorry. Yeah, I could do the twenty-fifth.
What's that fall?
It's a Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Yeah.
All right.
What time?
I know you made it here today for this time, but you're coming from afar.
As long as I have a heads up, I can.
All right.
I was delayed because it was an accident.
You traveled yonder, um, to get here. So, yeah, or can we do four thirty?
We need four thirty. I opened up five thirty that day, so it's regular time, but yeah, four thirty works.
Okay.
We just need to check to make sure the space is available.
Yeah, it usually is during the regular business hours, but, um, yes.
Yes, or possibly prime time or in our cars.
Yeah, currently there's a meeting at six o'clock and one at seven o'clock that day in the, on the regular calendar. I don't know what else is in this room, but like, say we can use somewhere else, we can sort that out. So twenty-fifth at four thirty.
All right.
And.
And then the final one.
Like, say either Tuesday, the thirty-first, or when, say, the first.
What works best for everyone, thirty-first or the first? That's a Tuesday or a Wednesday.
Either one is fine.
Yeah, I'm fine with it. What works for everybody else.
All right, I'm fine with either one of those two. Is there any in regards to the room being open? Is there anyone?
Um, well, I'd say for my time, it would be better to do it on the Wednesday. That way we're doing it at four thirty during regular business hours instead of staying late.
Okay.
I don't have a preference either way.
That sounds good.
So it's going to be the twenty-fifth and what day?
The twenty-fifth and then, um, February first.
We need a motion on that.
I was just going to ask that.
I don't think so, because we're not actually setting dates. I guess you could make a look if you wanted to. I'll make a motion that we get together on January twenty-fifth at four thirty. We go over the budget and have another meeting on February first, four thirty, finalize it.
Second.
And a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm an I. Um, next, E, we're going to review discuss act, um, calendar year two thousand twenty-two annual report.
So this is a report that every board has to submit, every, every committee, every year, there's one that's not due yet. Um, I don't think it's due till like March or something like that, the annual reports. Yeah, and I'll do it till like March. However, um, you've got a copy in the twenty-twenty-one one there. Uh, there's a lot there. It, it was generally written by one of our board members, Matt Hannis has done it, Tom Pyris has done it. Um, Tom, sometimes just hand writes stuff in and give it to us and he would type it up, but, um, it's always prepared by one of the board members. So if that's the case, even if it's not, somebody's got a, it's going to take some time to put it together, and you may have to talk to some people and all that. So I just wanted to on the radar so that somebody's working on it. I don't want to get to the week before it's due and then everybody's.
And this is just some examples of what we've done in the past, but I did look at some other, like, boards and committees. They, um, ones just to get some ideas, they weren't as, we were very, we're very.
Detailed.
Detailed, detailed, but it's nice, but.
Right, and that's just that every board and committee does it differently.
Mm-hmm. So this was just to get this on the radar, and then if anyone has any interest, um, working on this.
Uh, I can work on it.
All right.
I wasn't here in twenty-twenty-two, but I could work on it.
Yeah, well, I started going back to and trying to look at past agendas to try to remember what happened. Um, because even though I was here, I can't remember everything that's happened. Um, so that, that helps too. And then Todd, Todd probably remembers what happened, right, Todd?
Some stuff I do and some I don't. Usually to look back at the calendar, the minutes, the meetings, um, agendas.
So, yeah, if you, if you want to work on that, that would be great.
Sure.
Do we need a motion that Patrick's going to work on that, or? Can I just stand how?
It needs to be a motion.
Okay.
Unless you're ordering him to do it.
Um, so Stacy, did, did we have like an ETA on when Stacy was going to be here?
No, she said she had another meeting at, um, prime time, so she's trying to work it around that.
Maybe we can motion to, can we motion to move things out of order until she gets here?
Yeah, you can just table it until she's, until she arrives.
All right.
What's that working on?
Um, ask the barn and stable permits, because we wanted Stacy to be here for that.
Yeah, I thought that we already did that.
There was still, something was still not completely, was it the barn or the stable one that's still not finalized?
It's both. Um, the question was whether or not we wanted to continue either one of them, both of them, whatever. And I had talked to Stacy and they agreed that barn permits could be dropped. She wants to keep stable permits. But the board wanted to hear it from her, not from me hearing it from her. So we tabled the last time, and she didn't make it to last meeting, but they say she is supposed to be here tonight. So I'm texting her now to find out.
Okay. So, um, motion to table it, anyone, or move it or?
Make a motion to table it until Stacy, she gets here.
I'll second.
Can I get a vote?
Aye.
And then I'm an I. So we'll move down to inspector reports, um, health agent.
Give me a second. You got to write down lots of motions, and I'm texting Stacy.
Or I did miss one. Gee, other items not recently anticipated by the chair within forty-eight hours. I don't have anything.
So you're doing, please, both unanticipated. I don't. There's, and, thanks.
Health agent, do you have anything?
I have one thing. Put it in here. Um, Public Health Excellence Grant has authorized towns to send up the two people to the housing training, which is live training. It's a virtual one, which has happened through COVID. They go live with it in its February. I can, well, hey, she'll be here in five minutes.
Okay.
Um, looking at now. So it's already paid, it's, you know, P H E money, grant money is already paying for it. So, um, and this has previously come up. Mrs. Mello and myself and Mrs. Katabia were all interested in it. There was no booking of anything, because there were no dates or anything, but we were all interested in it. Obviously, I'm still interested in it. I don't know.
I didn't know if any of the other members were interested. Um, it's, I think you said up to two members from our department.
Well, yeah, you could send more, but you'd have to pay for the others. I think we'd send one of, one of us.
Yeah, or either of you interested?
I don't have time on that short notice, but if you were interested in it, you want to.
Were you interested at all, Paul?
I, I will do it. If you can do it.
All right, yeah, that would be good.
What is that, a date, Todd? Um, January thirtieth, which is a Monday, February first, February seventh, and February eighth.
Is it all those dates or you pick a date?
It says dates and locations, so it looks like we don't only have to do one of them. So I guess the one we'd most likely do is the one in Taunton at the Holiday Inn on February first. What time is that? It's moving forward to the revised housing code presented by the Community Sanitation Program at Department of Public Health. Uh, eight fifteen is the welcome and it ends up at three. Okay, now we'll be back here.
It's a very funny day.
First. Schedule that.
Schedule that.
Anything else?
So I'm going, balls going, those two.
Yes.
Um. It's been very, very quiet on the work front, and I have no applications in front of me, no date schedule, uh, so that's been good. So basically, uh, I've been able to kept up on some of the other stuff that was kind of behind, we haven't worked on solid base numbers too.
Did you put, did you pass in that last um capacity study that was needed for the?
I did some of it, I don't know if it was all completed before they closed the deadline.
Oh, wait, oh, it's for deadline, oh.
Um. What else? Obviously, we're still, uh, I got a pile of stuff um in the office that some of it's gonna be kicked over to the building department, Nancy to take care of, um. Trying to get all that stuff in order for the permits. Pat came in and went, all the ones we had at the time went through to determine what was there and what was missing. So we gotta reach out to all of them and get the permits issued there and all that kind of thing, so there's, there's plenty to be done, I'm just trying to get to it and uh.
Who do we have to reach out to?
So it's a restaurant filed to get a permit, and they gave me their service safe and their insurance and their money, but they didn't give us their allergen awareness, we'd have to call them and say we need your allergen awareness. So, um, yeah, and it's not all of them, there's just some of them that have some missing, Pat would know better, because he did it, so.
Yeah, there's only a couple that were missing stuff.
So, and then once we get that, then we get the issue of the permit number, and then give them a permit, and then the board has to sign it, you've already signed a few of the permits, but there's still a bunch more, so more still coming in. Yeah.
What do they do, bud?
December thirty first. It's a calendar year permit.
Right. So you're saying they're already late, they should have been?
Yes. So technically, every restaurant needs a permit from January first to January to December thirty first every year, so right now restaurants don't have those permits.
So they're operating without permits?
Yes.
What, is there a penalty?
It's up to this board to determine penalty, and since it's our office that hasn't gotten the permits out, I don't think that we would be taking action against them.
Yeah.
But if it was because they just didn't do it, then we'd be taking action.
Right, I misunderstood what you said.
So, um, so it's all on the uh pile of stuff, like, say, I'm trying to organize it and. Deal with it as I can, figure out what I can send to Nancy, and then obviously we'll go in that direction too.
Okay, so you said that you've been working on some solid waste stuff, but should, getting these permits out should probably prioritize over that, like?
Yes, exactly, um, but a lot of these solid waste numbers play right into the budget, that we need to have the numbers for the budget too, so, um, yes, there's a lot of things that are important, so. That's why Mr. McGovern came in and punched some of it for me.
Thank you.
How much, how much more work is up to do to get that gun behind us?
But like I say, uh, I know we gotta go, some of them have to be called, and some of them it just has to be processed and the permit number issued and fill out a permit form, and print it out and get it signed.
I think some, we should probably prioritize getting it done.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm assuming you're referring to the food permits first, installers can wait.
What's up?
I'm assuming you're referring to food, that installers can wait, septic installers.
Septic installs, they already have their paperwork in?
They do, but again, it's a year license, and if they're not installing a septic system, they don't necessarily need the permit today, the license today, they could wait.
Right, we all, we have to sign off on it, right?
Again, we gotta go through it, make sure their insurance is there, and their licenses and the waste license and that kind of stuff, just to get it going through the.
Yeah, I don't think there were any installers that were missing anything, um, I think there was just a couple of food vendors that, and it was a week or so ago, so I, I need to refresh it, but. Um, I think there were just a couple of like allergen awareness things that were missing, or a check that was missing, or something. Um, I, I don't mind, I can come back down and, and go through that list again and start calling them, um. Just, I mean, it's, access is tough, um, but we can, we can get it done, but the food should get done first, you know, and then, I mean, if the, I mean, the building spec would know better, if they, I'm sorry.
Give them to me, if Nancy cannot handle the workload, then I will reach back out to the board and let you know what help we need.
This is in regards to food permits?
Food and installers. I was unaware that that stuff wasn't done, no one should be operating without a valid permit. So I'll expect to get those on Tuesday.
I also have some bills that have to be paid too, and some checks that came in and I need to comply, so I'll get some out here. Oh, I don't have any of those.
That's it, okay, um, can we? Get a motion to go back to F. Stacy here?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we go back to F, the barn and stable permits.
Yes, second.
Second. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hi Stacy, our, so we would like to review, discuss act, the barn and stable permits. Um, we just wanted to hear from you what you were comfortable with and.
I'm comfortable with the agreement of the barn permits. But I want to keep the stable licenses, because most of our stables. But we do have a lot, a lot of how this is, if you have one horse, you have to have a stable license. But I don't want to get rid of them, because some of our stables do training and courting and um teaching, and they need to be able to come over and, and bone that, so. We need, I think they need to have stay, the licenses need to stay, the farm permits could go.
Right.
Oh, should we have two different type of permits? One, somebody just has one boss and they add their own pleasure versus somebody that's doing lessons and board and all the bosses has multiple.
Did you get a copy of the permit? Um, so you check, I think you call in how many horses you've gotten, what you're doing, I think it's all on the permit already, the license application. Yes.
Oh, for the stable, yes, number of horses to be stable numbers solved.
Yeah, so it doesn't necessarily ask in the application how they use it, if it's for training or whatever, but it's the same, it's the same application for all.
So is the price the same, but where they have one horse, about twenty horses?
I'm not sure, I would change it money, I just inspect.
Okay, yeah. I don't believe it's by the number of horses, I believe it's um strictly by the state.
I just don't see, yeah, that someone's got one horse, they have to pay the same price as somebody's that wouldn't facilitate the twenty horses. How much is the permit fee?
I'm calling it up now. I'm not finding it, we're waiting. Uh, residential stable permit is twenty five dollars a year, a commercial stable is fifty.
Also, there's a different price in the, in the fee, yes, open.
All right, so we're just making a motion to get rid of the barn permits, but keep the stable permits.
Stable licenses, yes.
Okay.
We can always change the stable license.
Right, we're just, we're focusing right now on, okay, so I'll make a motion to get rid of the barn permits and keep the stable permits as is.
I'll second.
Um, uh, oh.
Aye.
And I'm an I. All right, thank you Stacy for coming, I know it, it was a quick thing, but I wanted you to actually be here and hear it from you that, what you, what your wishes were. All right, so we're gonna return back to inspector reports, um, Jim?
I have a couple of things for you tonight, uh, first, Todd, how long will it take you on Tuesday to get that stuff to you?
I can hand you the file right away, finding the permits and the license number, stop on the computer that I don't know where it is, so.
Can I have one of the board members be, be in my office on Tuesday morning?
Yeah, I'm gonna be there anyways. Do we do that, and did we skip over the helping still?
No, he gave his report, that's when we discussed that you're gonna go to that um housing thing.
Okay.
I want to discuss as a group, I want to get that done, because that has to get done right away.
Okay.
So you're gonna come in Tuesday?
I'll come in Tuesday morning.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I have two things for you, um, first. I'm, I'm not sure if you heard already, but the building department, fire department, and one selectman that closed a business in town. Was a restaurant, that restaurant failed to meet the minimum criteria set for by um or state local standards. So it's not something that we take lightly, uh, we certainly want to make sure that we give a business every opportunity to stay open. This business unfortunately didn't have the means and methods to comply, so they have to be closed. So Nana's place on forty four Wyndham Street will remain closed until further notice.
Now, their compliance, is it because of food issues or?
No, it's building and fire related.
Okay, so there's nothing really to do with what about?
Nothing I'm aware of, but I don't know if they have a permit for the water health either, so.
Well, again, you have a process permit for this, she had one for twenty twenty two, but we haven't done the twenty twenty three one yet, so based on this, then I'm gonna issue.
Over there, until.
I know. So the business owner has been given a path to compliance, uh, thus far, I haven't, we haven't heard back from them, so, you know, I'm, uh. I work closely with the selectman's office, it's not something we like to do, but. The issues at hand were not light and safety oriented, so we had, we had to intervene in that.
Who does that fall on, the, the business owner or the owner of the property?
Well, that's something that we don't get involved in, um, who's responsible for maintaining the systems on the property between the tenant and the owner? We don't have any control over who does it, we just need it in compliance.
No, it's only that section of building that's not compliant, because I know it was two nurses.
Yeah, the systems that were not compliant were specifically to the restaurant. The other thing I had, um, the health department was, uh, was empty during the week, this week, at one point, gentleman came in, he had a badge on for federal government, he's from USDA. So fortunately, I was there, um, we shook hands, we got acquainted, he was in town to talk to me, uh, and I, I want you to be involved in this. About a rise in roadside meat processing. He said that a lot of small farms were processing meat and poultry and selling directly to the public. So he wanted, first, are we aware of any, and I'm not aware of any, um, and then two, that we need to be mindful of it, because it seems to be on the rise throughout the Commonwealth. Um, in particular, which is why he was visiting municipalities individually. So I told him that I would bring it to the board and share it with the, uh, general patrol officer, and uh, just keep it on our radar. But I'm not aware of it, obviously, the concern is, you know, things aren't being done in a sanitary fashion and people are getting sick, so.
Now, that's only.
Um, that's right. Uh, basically, yes.
Because I think people have a different idea.
This is, this is when you're processing any products to sell directly to the public.
You didn't have one farmer does, in USDA.
Right. He did make me aware of that, but he was concerned about the smaller, and he used that, maybe we're not aware of it. And I, when you think about things, we, we actually had a pretty good discussion, you know, inflation costs, go to the market today, what things cost. It may seem appealing to get a pound of beef elsewhere, but we just want to make sure it's done safely.
Can I ask a question, it's, it's, it kind of goes with this, I don't know, eggs on the side of the road, that's, that's fine.
I asked that question, he said they were, they were exempt, so, do you have any other for a look?
For eggs, not that people can't get sick, right, but eggs are a whole different thing, they go from chicken to the side of the road. Where processing meat, you have a lot of cans in there.
Nothing's getting in there.
And some people put them out on a watch, and it's um, kind of for weeks on watch, and once washing that.
What'd you say, they said that was exempt or not exempt?
Sorry?
They, they said it was exempt or not exempt.
Stacy actually hit the nail on the head, because they're not processed, they're not subject to the same requirements. But scrambled eggs would be.
Yeah.
If they got them up there for too long.
They said, if you wash them, they have to be refrigerated.
Right.
A lot of people that do inside of their eggs don't wash them, because then they can sit out there, unless it's really hot, they can sit out there for a little while. Usually, at this point, I don't know of anybody that has eggs when they get eggs, because people are buying them because of the cheap of the buyout of the store.
Why would they have to do that, they didn't have it?
No, a lot, a lot of places go with mold season, so if you think that way, it's only eggs, right, I can't actually put up together what's the play.
So I, I did ask the agent to send me correspondence via email, and as soon as that comes to me, I'll distribute it um through Nancy to everyone.
That it?
Yes.
All right, I have, I have you on here, um, animal inspector, did you have anything?
No, all of our inspections have been done. And sent to the state.
No, you still doing barn inspections even though we're not gonna permit them?
I do barns, I have to do barn inspections for the state, this has nothing to do with the town, but I, I, that's all state related, the state. You guys recommend appointing me, the state appoints me, and then I have two requirements for the state, rabies and um barn inspections, or stable inspection, whatever you want to call them.
Actually, no, that's still, we're just in play, if we're not gonna have a permit.
No.
All right, next is nurse, so I'm stepping down his chair, I keep stepping. Um, so the Public Health Excellence Grant, we haven't met in probably over a month now, um, just due to the holiday and stuff like that. Uh, we are gonna resume our weekly Tuesday meetings on the twenty fourth. Um, so I don't have any update on that, I, the last I had known is we had out, we were looking for a grant coordinator. Um, I did get to, I had a luncheon today with a bunch of the other Massachusetts public nurses. Um, it's, it's, it's a real struggle with this grant, um, nobody's. It's just really, it's not really going where everyone thought it was gonna go, um. Nobody had very positive things to say, um, I'll just leave it at that, fortunately. Um, so I continue with my um work on the healing community study um with BMC. Um, we had went a couple of weeks ago, I don't know if anyone knows in Berkeley, um, the Fulham Vision Farm. Um, we went there, we're gonna have a drop in center there, um, that's gonna have um Star from Fall River. They're gonna be there, and they're gonna be able to be available to folks at certain days and times for people to come for harm reduction, um, either they're looking for um. Harm reduction medications, which they can get a script for there, or they're looking for um AA meetings or stuff, any kind of that resources, they can go there onsite, there'll be somebody onsite they can speak with. And they can get that from that, from there, I got to make the connection with the um nurse supervisor from Star. And Monday, she invited me, and I spent the day at Star, so I could see what the nurses do in regards to harm reduction, just because that's not my specialty, I don't know anything about that. Um, in working in this study, it is kind of challenging, working on something that I don't know anything about, so I got. I got, had a really nice day, I learned a lot, I feel actually confident in what I'm doing on that study now and what I'm offering to people. So I'm really thankful for her for um reaching out to me and allowing me to spend the day with her. So I'm really thankful for her for um, reaching out to me and allowing me to spend the day with her. Um, I continue to do the blood pressure clinic every third Tuesday at prime time. As well as contributing to the Strawberry Vine. Um, and on a more of a personal note, um, I did start working with the Rehoboth Town Nurse. I'm gonna be there on Mondays and Wednesdays, and this is just for my capstone for school, so it was nice because. It's a community right next door to us, and um, I have a nice partnership with her, so I've enjoyed that, it was only done one day, but it was still nice, um. And that's all I have. Any questions? Alright, so I'm stepping back up this chair, and we bring this to public input, does anyone have any public input?
Leonard Hall. Chairman of the Dayton. Board of Selectmen. I'm speaking as an individual, not for the. Minute ago. I heard that the Public Excellence Grant hasn't met for quite some time. We have spent. Over a year and a half. Trying to figure out. What the Board of Health is going to be. And what this man is going to have for a job description. Number of hours. Rate of pay. It is unfair. It is unfair to the Board of Health, it is also unfair. To Mr. Pilling. We postponed. Decisions. On a job description. As well as duties and responsibilities of the Board of Health. Because we were told that the Public Excellence Grant was going to pick up some of those functions. We postpone. Negotiations. Because. On a job description that affects salary, that affects this man's future. Because we were waiting for the Public Excellence Grant to kick in. They haven't. Correct me if I'm wrong, elected. A director?
Uh, yeah, a grant coordinator.
Grant coordinator. The time is coming. Where we, the Board of Health. Really needs to sit down as a group. And put together a plan. That they want to see. The town of Dayton implement. So we can go forward. Not waiting for someone else to determine your destiny. But you determine the destiny of the board that you oversee. Because very important in this picture. Is this man's destiny as well. He has been kept waiting. For some structure. And be honest with you, a contract for over a year. A contract we promised him in December. Actually, we promised it to him. Before April election last year. We're still waiting. He's still waiting. So I asked. This board. Put together a plan and a recommendation before the Board of Selectmen, because there's another thing. February sixth, you have to submit a budget. Until you figure out what you want to be. Job description. Rate of pay. How can you adequately write a budget that didn't come in the Board of Selectmen are going to support? Because there are a lot of questions that aren't answered. Thank you.
Awesome, I have, it still happened to a review. Of last year, Todd. Will be have to be done. Before we have a job description.
The evaluation.
Evaluation. You need, uh, I asked Todd the other day, uh. His goals from last year, and he has to self-evaluation also. I'm sure you got the, you know, I'll go, I understand. So I, I think that's relevant to us getting that done. Review, before it can actually, but with description was. Was some wrong?
I don't think you're wrong, but I also think that we always find. Find something that we have to complete prior to doing, and it, it just continues to keep prolonging it, we have. At some point, we have some kind of idea of what we, what we're foresee to the future regardless of looking through everything. Um, I understand where you're coming from, but I just, I just am afraid that we're gonna continue to add on things and then. As we heard, we go from one date to the next date.
You know what, I understand, uh, and I'm not against it, but well. The next couple of weeks, we're scheduled pretty tight. With meetings and everything else that does have a little more priority.
Can we, as a board, meet and? Get input from Todd or however, like what's out there, um, I, I understand the frustration, um, but. This is my second meeting, and I don't have any idea what was not done in the past, so. Like, as a group, I think we need to sit down and say what, what's happened in the past year, because there's been a lot of change in this board. Um, and what is, you know, priorities, and what is focus, and what needs to be done, um, you know, like I said, I, I was unaware that. Todd was in, um, and I, I think the board needs to figure out what, what is out there, what hasn't been done. Um, and what needs to get done, I mean, we know the budget, you see it done ASAP, we need those permits have to get done ASAP, you know, we can't forget about the person that's. Doing all of this legwork, um, as well, but i- if there's anything else out there that we're not. Seeing, need to sit down and figure that out and come up with a priority list.
Yeah, uh, how would we add it to the meeting on January twenty fifth? Yeah, so we're gonna be talking about the budget, then anyways.
Yeah, because to talk about the budget is to talk about. This, the health agent's position.
And we should probably be able to get the, the reviews done. Uh, before that date. I was, only a few questions. What we need, uh, last year's report. But his goals, which I'm new to this too, so I have no idea what they are.
I did print them up, they're sitting on my desk, I forgot to bring them all.
Okay. Make copies, everybody. We need to make a motion to add that to the January meeting, that'll just go on.
It's just an agenda item, so it can just be sent. Alright.
So the only thing we're gonna have at that meeting for the January before. Discuss the. Budget. And, Dr. Todd.
Mr. Hall, you had mentioned a contract. How, how does that process? I'm guessing that it's a lengthy process, how does that work?
It's been quite a thing. Going on for over a year. What is like, when the board of health sit down, negotiate?
Do all positions within the town have contracts or no?
No, Mr. Pilling had asked for a contract. And we had said. That we would, in good faith, negotiate one.
I just, I just wanted to understand the, the whole.
You can, you can negotiate. All three of you with us, or you can have a representative negotiate. Originally, it was Mr. Pius. Chico and Mike Martin. And. We're on here over a year now. We haven't had any. Negotiations recently, so I would recommend that two boards do it. So that. One of the beauties of doing that. You can get everyone's opinion out there. How you structure, you know, executive sessions and then regular sessions. You could actually take votes on pieces of it. Or the final one and do it quickly, because time is of the essence. Whereas if you do, like say Nicole, were to be the representative, she'd have to come back. To her, to the rest of the board, that would be another meeting. You know, time. Of the essence, not really, you're looking. At an issue of fairness. Incredibility with public. But you're also looking at, you gotta put together a budget. You know, these. The duties. As well as the money that you're going to pay Mr. Pilling, that goes in your budget. If you're going to take certain duties away, like say. Septic inspections and you're going to hire someone else, well then, you've got to put that money in your budget. To have a consultant company. That goes all into your budget process. Every second.
Yeah, realistically, I mean, I'm not, you have to be the only one thinking this, that there's no way that that's. And we're gonna be able to.
Get a contract.
To do that.
We definitely need to have a few more meetings, joint people. And maybe some of those as negotiations, which would, would involve executives.
Right, is there any further discussion?
No, all going back to the meeting on twenty fifth. When we talk, Todd, as a group, does that happen, the executive session?
Only if it's negotiating a contract, if you're doing the evaluation, it's open section.
It's okay, yeah.
Right, is there, is there any other public input? Um, the correspondence. Anything done?
I think we went over it already, both training.
Alright, so we have some approval of minutes, um, November twenty ninth, two thousand twenty two, a special meeting as well as December eighth. Two thousand twenty two, regular meeting, did everyone have a chance to look those over?
I briefly did.
Okay.
That's right. Any motions?
Make a motion to accept the minutes from November twenty ninth, special meeting as well as December eighth, regular meeting.
I'll second.
I.
I.
And then I'm an I. Can I get a motion to adjourn or?
Last, Mike, if he has anything else to say?
Mike?
You know, I don't have anything to say, I say enough, so thank you.
You're welcome. Alright, I'll make a motion, we'll sit up, we adjourn.
Second.
Oh.
I.
I.
And we adjourn at five thirty eight. Thank you.